Okay, sorry to the public that we're starting a little late. We had some technical issues with our civic clerk. So we're going to do it the old fashioned way tonight and just call votes out instead of voting on on our electronic format. And we did just have an executive session, so I just need to close that out for us. The time is now 7:17 PM and the executive session has been concluded. And will all participants in the executive session please state their names for the record? I'll start with Kelly.
Kelly Case.
Catherine Nakai.
Rusty Neal.
Robert Zulawaga.
Michael Lawson.
And Nina was sort of there.
Oh, yes, Nina Williams, as needed, appearing by telephone.
Thank you. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the opens meeting law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Hearing none, I do want to summarize that we discussed our city manager's contract and we have come to consensus regarding the salary and benefits clause in his contract. And can I get a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to approve the salary adjustments and compensation adjustment as discussed in the executive session on Michael Lawson.
Very good.
No second.
Okay, thank you. Alfieri, we didn't do roles, so sorry. Okay, that's okay. Case?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
And Suzanne, would you like to do roll call?
That's okay. Mayor Protem LeVar?
Present.
Councilmember Alfieri?
Absent.
Councilmember Case?
Here.
Councilmember Nakai?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
And Councilmember Zulawaga?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Very good.
All right, now we are on the ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and we're starting with three A, which we are actually not doing this evening because Deanne Betterman was not able to be present. So we're going to move it to another agenda so that she can be in person. So we have the opportunity to speak to her for that position. So, all right. Now, on to three B, that's beautification award presentation to Righteous Grounds Coffee Roasters. And Rob Phelps is going to present for us.
Hey, council, I guess as you guys have seen before in the past, keep Woodland Park beautiful. Whenever they get notified of someone that's done something gone out of their way to do a little bit better in the community, they award that organization or person with the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Award. And I'm just going to hand it over to Matt from Keep Woodland Park Beautiful that can talk about the rest.
Hey, everybody. Just like Rob said, our primary focus as a Keep America Beautiful affiliate is to inspire and educate people to take part in improvement and beautification projects in their local communities. And whenever somebody does an outstanding job of beautification project, we would like to recognize them with an award. So we have our beautification award that we are presenting tonight to Jim and Jesse Huthmaker. They are the owners of Righteous Grounds Coffee Roasters, a coffee shop and roaster company here in Woodland Park that opened in August of 2021. The building that they moved into was very old and they took part in a very significant restoration and remodel project. And so we have an award that we would like to present them tonight that would like to come up.
What's his last name?
Yeah, absolutely.
Matt, what's your last name?
Hayes.
Matt Hayes.
Matt Hayes. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
We just want to say thank you. It was, it was a little bit of a.
Into the mic, man.
Jim. Sorry. It was a little bit of an undertaking in the middle of COVID. You normally don't go out and start a coffee roasting company or a restaurant in the middle of that. You know, we have a few snap foods with that. It took us about nine months to renovate the building. But as you can see, it turned out well and the community has really responded well to the, to the building itself and also to our business. So we're very happy about that. We appreciate you guys. We had a coffee roasting business on the East Coast and before retirement, we've, we kind of chose a place we really liked to live. And we've been a part of this community before down in the spring. So, so we chose to do that. We didn't know COVID was around at the time, but who did, right? So we really appreciate you guys, Jesse.
Um, that's it. We just want to say thank you. Thank you so much for all your help and support and just support as a community. It's been, it's been great.
Awesome. If you would move to the middle of the floor for the presentation.
Jim and Jesse, I just want to commend both of you for your, your persistence. I know that you had a very difficult time in getting this up and running and it did go longer than needed to. And I just commend you for your persistence to offer the community this. So, thank you.
And I'll commend you on the quality of the coffee. My wife and I have gone over there to try you out as a new business and found you have a good product. Thank you.
We're very glad you're here.
Thank you.
Would you like to join for the picture?
I can.
Yeah. Comfortable chairs.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Oh, and kudos on the chairs, too. They're really comfortable.
Be careful.
It might be working. I don't know, but if we can keep old fashioned if you want.
It's not working for me yet. Okay. It suddenly works for someone. Holler out.
Okay.
I've given it up. I could.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're good.
Okay. All right. So now we're on to four additions, solutions, corrections to agenda, none. Five consent calendar. Council, if you'd like, we can either do all of it together or we can do A and B together and have C as a discussion or is there any preference?
Can we do each one individualist tonight?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. So we'll start with five A approval of the council meeting minutes and Suzanne presenting.
Thank you. So this evening, council, we have the approval of the November 18th, 2021 regular city council meeting minutes with one minor correction that was brought to my attention. When we were appointing Sean Nielsen for the planning commission last, the vote I had recorded as five one, it was five zero. So I just have that minor correction. I don't know if council has anything else. Otherwise, we'd look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with, as presented tonight. I'll suck up.
No, you got it.
Was a red button.
Robert second.
Robert second.
Okay, Case?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. The next item agenda is the October 2021 Statement of Expenditures. And I see that our finance director is on Zoom. Should there be any questions? Council, is there any questions for I and B? Sure, Robert.
I have, I have two. Aaron, one is really more for our education. Check number 112809 is Colorado Canyon signs for vehicle logos. And I know we rolled out a new logo for the city. And I just wonder if we've got a budget number of what we anticipate that's actually costing us. Either now or later date, I just wanted to highlight it.
Yeah, I will look into that and get back to you.
Okay.
We, we have not tallied too much. I mean, we have available, obviously, but we haven't put it together in total tally yet. This is definitely the biggest piece we put that together.
And then we talked about the idea of fundraisers with ball caps and, and hoodies and stuff. Just wondered if there's some kind of.
Yep. You know, we have great graces working on that. We, we're looking into apparel right now. We have some stickers. And we have not put it out there for purchase yet, but very soon.
Okay. My second check number is 112845, a divide asphalt and driveway for the trailhead, city hall, and the bike trail. My question is how far up we took that project? And then how much of that are we taking on or are we taking on the county part of it? And that stood to a $39,728.
Aaron Kip is here to answer that.
Oh, good.
So in regards to the trail specifically, we just did the city's portion. So we seal coded where it starts to asphalt basically at lake and went all the way north to Triple B Road and stopped there.
Okay. And then are we participating in all on the further part or no?
Sally was able to get the MMLF grant that you guys approved, that IGA. And that part of the portion of the trail is funded by that grant. And Sally has been in communication with the county as well to help with that project. And then we have a small portion as well.
And that's not in this check?
No.
Okay. Great. I think those were the only two questions I have on, on the budget expenditures. So if anyone.
Anybody else? All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sir, you need more detail on that.
LeVar?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Excuse me, Suzanne. Councilmember Alfieri is now an attendant.
Oh.
Okay, we'll have Rob promote her to panelists.
Does she get a vote, too?
We'll catch her on the next vote.
Yeah, well, she can catch up with us. So.
Okay, I'm just for the record, we'll mark that it is 7:28 and councilmember Alfieri has joined the meeting.
Very good. So move to item five C and Rob will present that. And I think council may have some questions for you, Rob, once you get, okay. I'm going to start with councilmember Neal. Do you have any questions for item C?
Does Rob have a presentation first or?
Do you have?
It's not really a presentation. I was just going to go over, you know, as you guys know, we have strands of fiber coming up the pass. It was a project we took part of a few years ago. Those fibers are terminated now on the edge of town near Walmart. So the contract in front of you is, it's with HR Green. It was put out through the formal bid process in El Paso County. So we're piggybacking with that bid. But the idea behind this is basically for them to give us options and talk about what it'll cost, different things we can do with that fiber, to use that fiber in the city and expand the infrastructure that we have here. And we do have some members of HR Green here to answer any of your technical questions.
Okay, excellent. I don't even know where to begin. I think I've made it public knowledge that I spent the last 20 years as the chief technologist for Hewlett Packard. And I was in the government sector doing nothing but contract reviews on government contracts. When I went through the contract, I found there are many paragraphs that need probably to be modified. I don't think you will object to much of it. It's just a little bit more precise. And I'm going to start with the most important document that you always need to have is the requirements document. There's a paragraph in here that says, since an outreach effort and speed survey is underway, no public engagement will be needed as part of the project. We understand the city is now performing a citizen-based speed study. We will include the results of study within our analysis. Can you talk me through, I mean, you're a technician. I've got a doctoral level of knowledge.
Do you need a job?
Do, no, I am retired. I would love to do this job for you. Talk me through that paragraph because as you know, because I know that the speed study that was the survey is not a technical survey. It in no way gives a boundary of what we're defining speed. We have no idea what the target is for speed. Your impression of what is speed versus who, who might be a gamer and somebody who reads books online, their definition of speed and how fast the pages change vastly different in terms of requirements. So can you talk me through why, why there is no requirements document to start with, with this contract? And how you formulated this without a requirements document?
I think the purpose of this job was limited to or focused on connecting up all your facilities. We're talking about fiber and the speed issue isn't much of an issue.
Touchdown. Speed has, the, the network, the fiber can be enormous depending on how it's capped and what.
How much you want to spend on the end.
On the ends of it. It has nothing to do with the fiber.
Our, our goal was not to get into neighborhood issues or any of that. Our focus on this was a focus of what are the options available to you to connect up your facilities? Number one, and number two is a sort of a offshoot of that is to find the best way to be able to do that. You know, where are costs at? For example, can we hook it all on core power poles?
Power poles, yeah.
By far the cheapest. Two, we would look at things like what's the possibility of plowing in conduit instead of digging it in? And those kind of things, because you're looking at a $5 a foot for aerial or, or.
Can be up to a million dollars a, a mile.
It can be. Well, we, I was responsible for all the locals involvement in the seed out project, bringing that up the mountain. And it was $3 million to come up the mountain for 100,000 feet. So that was pretty reasonable price. You guys got near 24 for $50,000.
Credit. Oh, we got a bargain on the fiber. We, the dark fiber we own, we have a great deal. But the contract that they're, Mayor Protem LeVar, I don't know how to go through this. The contract has got a lot of paragraphs that I would like to take offline because I would have to vote no to the contract as written. I can start going through and be nitpicky. Or we can perhaps postpone this until we can sit down. And I'd be willing to sit down with you with our, our legal and go through paragraph by paragraph where I think there are some issues. And the reason why I'm trying to protect the citizens, because I know you can spend up to a million dollars a mile putting fiber in the ground if that's what you're forced to do. And that's not taking into consideration the grant, the granite that we have up here versus putting it up into the airway. One of the questions I have is when is, when is our contract with Core up for renewal? Because that would be an enormous leverage point.
That's the kind of stuff that I view this job as to be. If you end up, if we end up saying it's going to cost you a million dollars a mile to do this, I can tell you what your answer is going to be. It's been nice talking to you.
Exactly.
So, but right now you have none of that information. Core has certain issues with how many lines they'll allow on their poles and how good the poles are. And we're going to try to suss out the information on that. So no, we're not going to tell you upfront what any requirements are. That's going to be heavily up to you guys in the end when you, if you decide to do it, what kind of, what kind of end equipment do you want to put on the fiber or do you want to do the fiber at all?
And actually, this is really not for your company. The question I have is the requirements document should come from the, the city. And, and you're using a speed based survey. And we're talking about a network, a, a fiber network. As you just heard the testimony, the network speed could be enormous or it could be itty bitty. It depends on what card you put on the, on the ends where you, where you cap it and light it up. And I'm trying to understand how we're using the word speed to define the requirements. And we get later on and it talks about one of your deliverables is a vision. A, a vision document. Well, how can you have a vision of Pat? I mean, if I had infinite dollars, my vision would be add home, holographic images in every house next door, next door, citywide holographic images, which would take titanium nanotubes to be able to accomplish that. You know, the bandwidth to, so you can talk about speed all you want. You can talk about a vision, but there's a difference between wanting something and needing something. And that we've got language in there that talks about wants and needs. The, the contract needs to be reviewed, I think, a little bit better before we are voting on the whole contract right now. And I'm sorry that, you know, when I got this and I started reading through it and taking notes, this is the form that we're supposed to bring it up and discuss it.
So let me ask a couple of questions. One, ultimately, who's responsible for signing this contract in which department?
It would be the city manager's office.
Okay. Have you had time to review this contract?
I have not, no.
Okay. What is the deadline to have this done? Are we under the gun for this proposition or?
So these are ARP funds, so they can be used later.
Because my concern is, I have a feeling there are at least four council members that will pass the contract this evening if need be done for the sake of time or money or the essence of the contract. However, our intent is likely to not have a December 16th meeting. So my concern is if we do not have a December 16th meeting and the contract is not approved by then, does it cause a problem?
No, I don't. I don't know if it poses a challenge for HR Green. I don't, I don't believe it does on our part.
And let me give you a little comfort. It is a well-written contract. There are just paragraphs in it that I think need to be looked at and tweaked, given the situation. I've read a lot of contracts and this is not an unprofessional. You did a very professional job of this contract. It's just.
We were working with your staff to come up with it. On your requirements, I think part of, part of the issue that, this from my standpoint, are this is to help you define your, define what you as a city want for, for requirements. For example, basically your staff said you guys aren't terribly interested in fiber at all. Fine, that's, we can give you some parameters on that. And the fact is to hook up all your city facilities with them spread all over, you will have a good feel for what it's going to cost you to, to get all that. But until then, we don't know if Core is going to let you on any of their polls.
Right.
And, and those are the kind of things that I viewed this contract for was to give you as much information. What's it going to take to get down to your fiber at Wal, Walmart? The state has fiber in there and they will rent you fiber. So you may not have to go there at all. And I have the prices. I don't remember right off the top of my head. If you want to rent two fibers from there up or whether you want to put it in yourself, there, those are the kind of things that I think we're trying to give you is, you know, if it's got to go underground and it's half a million a mile, I think it's pretty well going to say unless you want to use all your federal funds that are going to come through here that are broadband based, it probably doesn't make a lot of sense. Well, that's not.
Look, I agree. And, and I saw the language where you're helping us create the vision document that is a deliverable. I think it would be wise. If there's no time limit, my request or recommendation to the council is to hold off voting on this right now till it can be tweaked with the city manager, HR Green. Your, your thoughts about what about the connectivity up further west?
Well, I, I think this is an ideal opportunity for us to discuss this. I'm not talking, you're limiting it to signing it. I, I have a lot of questions about the discussion of this and the parameters of it. So I think we should take that time now to get those aired. And then if you want to go back and rework the contract and some of the issues that come out of this discussion. But I mean, I, I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight. There's too many unanswered questions and it doesn't, and part of it is going to help you do your job, I think, once we have some more of this discussion. So if you, if we can, Mayor Protem, if we can discuss some of the other things that I see in the contract go, well, have we figured, figured for these? That would be helpful.
Sure. And I'm going to let councilmember Case say something, too.
I just have a question just for my own edification. Is, has the city attorney reviewed this contract?
Yep.
And did she provide any comments?
She's on, we have Ms. Williams on Zoom.
Oh, well, I'll ask her then. I just wondered what her, if she had any concerns with the contract that she brought forward in her review of it and.
No, I, I, can everyone hear me? I, I made some comments and they made some changes. And Rob Phelps had made, you know, some comments that we worked with. And I believe it's a contract that's similar to what the county is using and other municipalities in the county. But it sounds like the concerns that other council members have are more substantive. You know, there's no legal issues with the contract, but it sounds like there's more, the terms itself are what's at issue, if what I'm hearing.
Well, there is one legal. I mean, it's a time and material, but it's written as though it's a firm fixed price.
Not to exceed price.
Yeah, it has a not to exceed price.
Not to exceed. Not to exceed price.
Right.
So it's time and material. If we do it faster, which given the price, I don't think that's going to happen. That it's, but we're cut off at 39,500 or whatever the number is. And if we aren't done, we work for free.
And but there's no language that tells us that. And my, my legal question was there was no paragraph in there that stated that the deliverables would still be due even when you reach the threshold of the cap of the 39,000, whatever the change was, because it reads as though it's a time and material.
That's generally the way we do them, where it's considered time and material up to the cap. And if we're not done, we've agreed to do this work, no matter what the cost is.
But there's no language that supports that statement. That is a missing.
Maybe.
Piece of language that says regardless, the, the deliverables remain the mandatory deliverables. It doesn't have any paragraph. If, if there is, please show it to me.
On, on page, yeah, there, there's not language that we will work for no cost if we don't complete the work with the 39,950. It does say not to exceed the fee on a time and materials basis. But if, if we're going to review the contract and I, we, we can do that, of course. But we, that could be added in there. HR Green has no issue with that.
No, we, we have no issue with that because that's our intent. We, we will do what the contract that we signed says we need to do. And it's our problem if it goes over the amount of money.
Right.
Specifically, it'll be my problem if it goes over because my bosses will be thrashing.
Yeah, normally that's what's called a firm fixed price contract, not a time and material.
Yeah, this is not firm fixed. Could be.
It's a maximum.
Yeah, it's a not to exceed, which gives, you know, that the contract will not come in for any more than that unless there's a contract change and the scopes change.
Correct. Correctly modded and I understand that.
Other than that.
And I get it, that it's capped, it is clear it's capped.
Words like that, it's fine, but, but.
There needs to be words to say we are entitled to the deliverables. Regardless of meeting the not to exceed.
Sure.
Price, that, that's the legal language that I did not see in the document. That should be there if you're going to make it a time and materials. With a cap. We still get the deliverables.
Oh, sure.
Right.
And that, that's our understanding, uh, if it's not that clear that can be easily fixed.
And we know that puts all the risk on you.
Yeah, it is.
And I know it, it, it sucks when the risk is on you, but that's what you're.
This believing we can do the work in that time.
Okay.
As, as long as everybody lives up to the contract, we will do it for.
So before we get to that, I, I just want to look at the parameters of it a little bit before you share, that's, that's a detail, but.
Yeah, I jumped over because of Kelly's question.
Well, I wasn't actually finished with my questions, but go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to follow up with, these are just logistics, is this budgeted in twenty twenty one?
Yes. So, and that was a comment I was going to make is if we do delay this at the twenty two. We, we will need to do a supplemental appropriation.
To move it from.
The signing of the contract.
Yeah, the, the appropriation lapses twenty one and then it would come back in twenty two. So along with the contract, you, depending on how Aaron would like to do it. You would see at some point that presumably an ordinance, maybe not with the contract, maybe a little later on, but.
And it would, it would need to be done even if we approved it this evening, because it's three months is your projected timeframe for the, the, to execute the con- contract. So that takes the payment into twenty two anyway, so.
So it would be, yeah, there would be.
Of course, that would be up to Aaron.
It's not a deal breaker.
Not if it was signed and agreed to though, then it stays and then.
You can accrue it back, yes. Yes, but you can accrue it back. But anyhow, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I just have to say that I, I don't have any heartburn with the contract, so thank you, sir.
And if I may add, just, um. Hearing a few of the concerns, it didn't sound like any of them are really big, but.
They're not.
H, H R Green has quite the reputation in Colorado. Um, I've worked with them in previous roles and they. Are something close to a standard for the kind of work that is being proposed here in Colorado. Um, I've actually known Mr. Merrick.
Quite a number of years.
Many, many years, yeah. Um, and his colleague, uh, Dave Zelenok many years, so. Um, and so they are, uh, they're, they'll do it, they'll do a good job and, um, I believe in that they will stand by their word. Um, and then as, as Rob had indicated, um, this is a cooperatively bid. Contract that came from El Paso County and has been vetted by El Paso County. Who's, who's quite robust in their process. So for whatever that's worth, I mean, that's not to say we should take. Our own critical eye and invest our own time, make sure it's ours, not by any means. Um, but that, that gives me a little bit of peace as well. Knowing that people with deep expertise. Have been through this process.
Clearly it comes across. I, I've read many contracts. It is a quality contract. It's just there are provisions in it that I think we need to hash out. And I'm kind of curious going into the parameters discussion, because I think that's really. More important than the technical things that I'm going to go through.
Is that the Dave Zelenok that used to be the transportation director at the city of Colorado Springs?
I used to be the traffic engineer.
That's where I know you from, John. I won't say publicly what you used to say to me when I would visit you in your office.
Oh, yes, let's not go there.
We'll have a. It had to do with CPA.
Oh, yes, I know. What, what it means?
Oh, I know what it means. It was directed towards me. I was, I was an auditor at that time for the auditor's office.
Now that I recognize you.
Yes, it's been years.
Yes.
It's a pleasure.
Said in jest, though.
Yes, of course.
And it was about your whole profession, not just you.
Not me. It was about the profession, exactly. It's good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you.
All right, Robert, do you still have some questions?
Yeah, I was waiting for the dust to clear. So, um, so on page thirty one of our packet. The background says the intent of this agreement is to advise the city of Woodland Park on a best course of action to utilize cities twenty four strands of fiber terminated. On highway twenty four, at the east edge of town. I recognize this is piggybacking on El Paso County's, uh, I get that. Uh, my question is in terms of where the city is in connection with the county. So we have, um, I talked with one of the commissioners today, actually. And there is talk that there is funding available for fiber optics for the county as well. So my question is, doesn't it make sense for us to be looking also west to see what's coming, either what's coming towards us? Or whether there's any value in that being a connected link rather than just us being kind of myopic in our, in our city requirements? That, uh, is there value in us looking at the, you know, bigger picture and where we fit into that? And that could actually save us dollars. For example, if there is funding that allows it to come to the county, maybe that would carry underground burial from. Walmart up through to Divide or, or further, you know, Cripple Creek, wherever it's going to go.
Previously, when I was working for the county, putting the conduit in, the fiber in out there, by the way, we put a hundred and sixty eight. Of which you got twenty four, Manu got twenty four, CSU got twenty four and the county got ninety six.
Ninety six?
Yeah, well, I don't know why they wanted that many, but that's what they wanted, so, uh. It was a three million dollar project, your share was fifty thousand, uh, as was Manatou's and. Uh, CSU, I think paid about a hundred and fifty thousand and. I think the county ended up, since they were collecting the money, it's like they're the one that's got to leave the tip at the end. Their share ended up around a hundred thousand for ninety six, so.
Okay.
Uh, anyway, uh, while I was doing that, I was talking to. Cripple Creek, the county badly wants to get to Cripple Creek. And, uh, Peak Internet, who is now forethought, I think, or somewhere. Anyway, they have a pipe that goes all the way to there. It's never been proofed. And we were trying to work out a deal to. Build it all the way to Cripple Creek. So yes, we have worked that way. As part of the deal was also, we were going to trade fibers. They badly want to get some of the ninety six fibers. The county has to go down to the head end on Tejon in Colorado Springs. That was going to be the trade for access to their pipe. It just didn't go anywhere and then they sold, so that sort of ended it. But, yeah, I've looked at that. I know where the fiber is. I've not seen. The big issue is the conduit was put in with a gas line and it's been in the ground for twenty years, not used. So there's a question of how good it is. Nobody has done that, but that's something the county might be willing to do.
Well, I understood too, there's federal funding and there was also fiber coming, I think it's as far as Lake George. On West, yeah, the other way. So, so if there are, uh, federal dollars or Biden boot doggo dollars or whatever. It just seems to me that if we're.
Yes.
That just the scope of what we're looking at really needs to look spherically because of connections so close.
We did the, uh, first study for Buena Vista and we're sort of looking at what would take to get back here. The reality is the county got. Hundred and forty million in ARPA funds. And I don't know how they've allocated. Last I heard, they had lots of those funds left. And now the infrastructure is dropping another billion dollars on the state. And a lot of it's based on rural. So it's very, it's, it's an idea of time to look at all of this. Because another advantage of ARPA funds is they can be used as match for other federal funds. At least that's my understanding. So it's possible to get a large percentage of the total cost of building something. Out of, out of the federal government. And when you get to Buena Vista, AT and T has a line that goes north all the way to I seventy. That Buena Vista has been talking with, the problem with those guys is they don't like governments. So they make it difficult to buy into them, but getting a redundant link would be very helpful for them and for you. So if somebody cuts. Your primary link down to the Springs, you have a second alternative, which you don't have now. So we can, we can put all of that in there to, to give you a better feel for what's going on in the region. And, and we need to update, I haven't talked to the new owners in quite a while. We can update all that and give you a feel for that, too.
Well, good, that, that, and, and as far as a second option, I know that, uh. Elon Musk is also looking at having a satellite to this area. And so is that a viable second alternative? And how realistic is that in terms of implementation and is that of any value to us?
Well, Elon Musk himself has said it's not a replacement for fiber.
Okay.
And a lot of it. I don't know, I've read different things about it, but if Elon Musk stuff takes off, it has limited bandwidth. And if you get a lot of people on it, all of a sudden, you're not doing very well. Your best alternative still is fiber. I, I see Elon Musk's stuff is for the real rural pieces. It would not do for you as a city at all. You're looking at probably. Two, three gigs between all your, um, your various facilities and everything you want to do. My guess is over a gig. The reality is, once you do your own, it's relatively cheap. Uh, if you can get to one, it's to, uh, Tejon, to the carrier hotel that goes to the world wide web. You pay about five hundred dollars a gig a month. That's all you pay. So ten gigs, five thousand a month is, in, you're probably paying that to whoever you're doing right now for your connections.
Yeah, I think.
And you weren't getting anything like that.
We're paying a quarter of a million a year for what we've got going on, so.
And that's, yes, I think was the basis of the first phase of this is to come up with, is it feasible? And we'll look at the money stuff too, to find out if it's feasible to build your own network. So you own your own facility and your own destiny and save. A lot of money.
Right. Well, good, I'm glad that you're spherical in that, in what you're already understanding, so that gives me confidence. Although I didn't see that in this, that's why I said what the background was, I didn't see where it was, whether it was looking at that. So if, if that is, uh, your intention, I'm good with it.
That's the intent.
Okay, good.
It's, my intent when I do these things is to give you more than you've asked for.
Okay.
So by saying you want that, that's, that's a no brainer. Because most of it's institutional knowledge we already have.
So I, I don't mean to interrupt, but what I'm going to recommend is, I know that, um, our city manager is going to have another meeting with this company. And why don't the two of you attend that? And then whatever you learn, you can summarize it and bring it back for the public. Cause I know most of the reason you're doing this now is for the public's involvement also, but it's eight o'clock now and we're still on number five.
Exactly why I'm doing it, Hillary.
So I appreciate what you're, I appreciate your questions very much and I appreciate your concern about the contract. So, and I don't take any issue with the topic, but I think that these are, some of these are sort of in the weeds questions too, and not, not everyone is interested.
Not at all.
Sorry.
Your kids will be.
I'm going to recommend that we push the contract to the next. So we'll table it and we just need to date certain, let's, can we do this by January, by our next January meeting?
January sixth, sure.
Okay. So we'll table it to January sixth and in the meantime, when our city manager meets with the company for fiber optics, the two of you can be invited. And you guys can have a heyday with questions and go over the contract wording.
Colorado Springs.
Yeah. And we're going to vote to move this to the next, uh, date, January sixth. So if I could get a motion to move this contract hearing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, move item. What item is this? C to the. January sixth, city council meeting for actual vote of the contract.
Great.
May I suggest one thing that you give your city manager?
I'll, I'll be with him.
Comments that can get to us ahead of time, so we can. Suss amounts if we have any problems with it.
Yeah, we tried to, uh, I could not make my schedule. He offered, I could not make my schedule over the past two days. We owe that to you.
Time, January is not going to be that big a deal.
Yeah, we owe that to you.
And, and you already know verbally what mine, mine are, so.
Discussion. Can we get a second, please?
Second. Any further discussion? Okay. Okay. Nikai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfiere? Yes. Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking your time.
You get a merit badge for that.
All right, so we're gonna. Move on to item number six. And public comment on items not on the agenda. And I don't have any names written down for items not on agenda.
Kip is checking in the back, we have nobody signed up. Oh, okay, thank you.
We have one for on the agenda.
Okay, and we have none on Zoom.
Okay.
Her hands have been up since we started, we answered her question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I don't know how to get rid of her hand. Okay, so we've, yeah, we've answered her question.
Okay, so we're on to seven unfinished business. We have done. Eight ordinances on initial postings, none, nine, public hearings. All right, and I do have someone signed up for nine A, but, so we will not forget that after we hear it. So item nine A is to approve ordinance fourteen oh nine and our presenter Sally Riley.
Mayor Pro Tem, I think we discussed earlier, I have a statement to make prior to beginning.
Yes.
Um, so just for council, so council knows this is a Q J amount, um, ordinance. And in order for this ordinance to pass, it needs to pass with four votes. So I'm just making that statement out loud for everyone to know.
Thank you. And it's Q J, so stay on topic.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is a hearing for a multifamily project. That will totally build a hundred and sixty seven units on twelve point four acres. And the applicant's representative, Jack Bestel, is here this evening. Representing Mountain Star Investments. So I'll. Drive through these slides fairly quickly. I have thirty one of them, so, uh, hold on, we'll go quickly. You, the location is up on Tammerack Parkway and Highway sixty seven, as shown by the yellow star. And here is an aerial with the property outlined in red. It is currently plotted as two lots, lot six and lot seven. And surrounding this area, we have the police department, Colorado Springs Christian School, the new Black Hills facility. Village at Tammerack currently under construction, the Woodland Fitness and the post office. The zoning map shows you that the property is zoned in brown here, that is multifamily urban. And there are a variety of different zones around this site, including multifamily suburban. And, uh, heavy service, commercial, light, industrial, as well as residential across Highway sixty seven. The comprehensive plan map from two thousand and ten. Showed this area as mixed use, so it could have been either commercial or, uh, residential. And then in the recently adopted comprehensive plan, that map has changed to multifamily. And then in the recently adopted comprehensive plan, that map has changed to multifamily residential, anticipating this project coming through the hearings. Quick review of the site plan, there are three apartment buildings that total 112 units. One apartment building is on the north end. This is the two-story apartment building. Then there is an apartment building toward the west side of the property with 44 units and a smaller apartment building with 30 units. Then there are also a number of townhomes, 12 total buildings with 55 units total on the Meadows area, which is kind of closer to the apartments as well as the Knoll Townhomes on the southern side of this property. So to blow up a little bit closer, the northern portion of the site also has detention pond, parking to serve the apartment buildings. And there is also going to be an emergency access ingress egress from Highway 67 to the site, just in case Tamarack Parkway gets blocked in the future. There's always an exit or entrance into this property and into the other sites as well. The southern portion of the 12 and a half acres includes the Knoll Townhomes down in this area. It also shows a walking path from Tamarack Parkway that circumvents the entire tract. There are two primary entrances to this development off of Tamarack Parkway and then a secondary entrance that is adjacent to the Village at Tamarack. Here are a couple of photographs taken from Highway 67 looking north. This is the Knoll area and it is the developer's intent to try to preserve the trees in this area as well as along Highway 67. There is a mandated 25-foot buffer on the highway. However, this developer is going to push that to 30 feet and put the trail in there so that it loops around. The rooftop that you see in this photo is the fitness club. So that gives you a little perspective of how the, the townhomes will wrap around the, the Knoll and behind the fitness club. The bottom photo is a little bit further north, so it also shows the trees. And, and do note that the highway is 132 feet wide. It's 66 feet the right away from the center line. So the actual boundary of the right of way is into the trees. And then there'll be another 30 feet protected before you'll see the apartment buildings or the townhomes. This next photo is the entrance to Tamarack Parkway and Highway 67. This is slated for improvements this year that I'm going to go into a little bit more detail later in the presentation. This photo shows, is taken from Colorado Springs Christian School driveway looking east. And the driveway to the development will be between the fitness center and the post office. And that is a 50-foot wide flag area. This exhibit is pretty much to show you how it will be built in two phases. The dotted line separates it from the north and the south. The north portion will be the first phase with the three apartment buildings and the Meadows Townhomes. The second phase will be the Knoll area and the Knoll Townhomes. And talk a little bit about the parks and open space proposal. This has been reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and a supportive recommendation that the property be developed with about five and a half acres of open space and improvements with small tot lots all connected with an exercise equipment, connected with a trail all the way around the 12 and a half acres. And that this will be open to the public. It will remain private, constructed, maintained. But this, we agree, will satisfy the park's dedication requirement and no need for fees in lieu of parks amenities since this developer is providing for developed park and recreation amenities that will be open to the public and serve as a neighborhood park for this area without the city having to have the expense of maintaining it or constructing it. So it more than satisfies the requirement for either a park's dedication or fees in lieu. The southern half of the project shows the looping trail, more exercise stations, a pavilion and more playground equipment and picnic areas. With respect to the parking, they're proposing a total for, for all 167 units, a total of 193 parking spaces. And that does not include the garages that the townhomes will have. So there will be ample parking with this project, which is consistent with the city's standards. Highway 67 improvements. So as you're aware, you agreed to develop the Highway 67 with a bidirectional turn lane that will be included on research, at Research Drive and Tamarack Parkway. Those construction drawings were submitted to CDOT three months ago. They finally provided us comments. Our engineer is now making those modifications. And we hope to have those construction drawings ready to bid out here in the next 30 days or so. And the traffic study that was done for this project was done by LSC Geoff Hodgson, who did the traffic studies for the previous two traffic studies. And CDOT agreed with the studies and the alignment that will be improved at both Tamarack Parkway, which I have a more better blow up here, and at Research Drive. So both these improvements coming out of the local street, there will be dedicated lanes for a through lane and a right turn as well as a left turn lane and then off the highway. The proposed traffic generation for the 167 units is 1,146 trips per day. And Tamarack Parkway and Highway 67 can easily handle this, especially with the improvements that will take place this coming summer. The architectural proposal for this is the Knoll Townhomes are various fourplexes. And you can see that they have garages as well as different varieties of materials. They are flat-roofed in order to keep them at 30 feet or less, measured at mean grade. The Meadows Townhomes have a different look, which will also meet our height requirements. And you can see that these two have garages and very nice architectural style. The lodge apartments are the two-story units that will be closer to the highways. So it will look more residential. And then the three-story apartments also bring in multiple windows or penetration as well as a variety of materials. So with that, staff and the planning commission have reviewed the application and it complies with the intent of the multifamily urban zone and the heights setbacks, frontage requirements, parking requirements, the fencing and shrubbery signage is a separate application. As far as the sidewalk, our intent is to accept the trail improvement next to Highway 67 to satisfy that requirement and that the landscaping and open space exceeds 40% as required for a multifamily project. With respect to the preliminary plat and the subdivision regulations, those have been reviewed and all comply with the drawings, the information, site considerations, streets, easements. And these will be private streets, internal. And the drainage will also be private. The site plan review in the staff report that was all detailed in terms of its compliance to city plans, regulations, traffic, no hazards, the utilities, drainage plan, no danger, all compatible. With respect to the 11 criteria for conditional use standards, there is a need at this location for a different type of housing. And it has a variety with rentals as well as the townhome ownership. It's meets the public health and welfare, does not harm property values, is in harmony with the area, city plans. It's in harmony with the comprehensive plan to provide a variety of housing stock to our city. And this property was actually rezoned right after the comprehensive plan in 2010. And that was in order to meet, we added 400 high priority residential units and thought that we would get that resulting from the rezoning. So here we are nine years later and the project is coming forward. Meets traffic requirements, drainage, water, sewer and solid waste, no hazards and meets our architectural design standards. The project went through referrals and public notices in the newspaper, adjacent property owners, posters. The developer even held a neighborhood meeting. It's not required by our code, but they wanted to make sure that the neighbors understood the project and had a chance to be able to talk to the developer informally. There were about a dozen folks who came to the neighborhood meeting. And this has been reviewed by our various departments and utility companies. I'm not going to read the staff recommendation, but just summarize it for you. It's in your packet. But the recommendation by the planning commission and staff is to approve ordinance 1409 with four conditions. The first condition is that prior to recording any future final plats or townhome plats, that there be a plat note fully written out regarding the trails, open space and recreation amenities, meeting the city's parks dedication requirements and that it be maintained by the private ownership and open for public access. Second part of that condition deals with submitting a set of covenants that will be reviewed and deemed, deemed acceptable by the city. The main thing that I look for when I review the covenants is that the plat and the covenants are consistent with one another. And then condition number two is prior to a zoning development permit being issued, a final site plan, the utilities plans, grading and erosion control plans, the roadway plans, profiles, drainage plan and report, all those are finalized. The stormwater management plan, any impact fees are paid and those are all reviewed and approved. And then there is also a need for a flood hazard development permit because a very small portion of this very southeast corner of this property is in the level gulch flood plain. So that requires for a planning commission to review the flood hazard development permit, which should not be any issues. Condition number three is to obtain the multifamily water taps. They will come back to the council requesting a reservation of taps for perhaps a portion of their project, perhaps just the first phase or the first building, and then subsequently come back for those taps. This project is in our build out scenario. We have planned for this to develop in the future in accordance with our limited water supply. And then lastly is that the transportation capital fees are paid at the time of zoning development permit or building permit. And that, that will be used to offset the cost to the improvements on Highway 67 as well as their requirement to provide the emergency access to and from Highway 67 at, at the developer's expense. So with that, I will open it for questions or ask the developer owner's representative, Jack Bestel, to approach the council.
Council, would you like the developer to approach first or do you have questions you want to address with Sally first? Okay, sure. So if you'd like to come up to the podium and.
Good evening, Mayor Potem, members of the council. I'm Jack Bestall. I guess the planner and the owner's representative. We're excited to bring this forward. It's, it's been a year and a half. I don't know exactly, maybe longer. But we've kind of been working at it to make sure we got a proper fit. You can see Sally is still on most of my images. She's using the same slides. Oh, sorry, no. I have a small 53 image presentation. No, I think I only have 13. But what we've done is I think tried to focus on a livable neighborhood. And part of what we've done also is to make sure we don't get streets and pavement areas to overwhelm it, knowing full well that apartments do need parking in that area. We tried to put into an enclave of parking as well. So there, we've tried to conserve natural areas. We've looked at integrated open space and architecture. The buffer, we think is really important along the highway. You've heard a little bit about that already in terms of. The buffer, we think is really important along the highway. You've heard a little bit about that already in terms of trying to get a little bigger. And then we'll talk a little bit about the orientation of buildings. A diversified housing mix, we really think, and you people know this much better about your community, that there's an opportunity here and there's a need for both attainable housing, but just for housing in general of this nature, from students to workforce to retirement to second home. There's a kind of a group of of housing that that makes sense for that. And we really kind of backed into this idea of providing really parks. It was as a part of an integrated open space system. And it made more and more sense to build and maintain those and have those be a part of the community mix. And of course, the thirty-foot maximum height. We felt like we could do what we needed to do without going beyond that. And we understand the community sensitivity to height. So it was kind of a simple decision. The livable neighborhood, I think, is is been touched on already, but you know, the looping trail is about two-thirds of a mile. The connection of it to the parkway and of course, along the highway corridor as well as connecting all the units together in both exercise and mini park and pocket park situations for for exercise and for young people. That's the livability factor, I think. Go ahead, please.
Excuse me, do you say two-thirds of a mile? In front of you.
In front of you.
I'm sorry. I heard you over here. Sorry. Did you say two-thirds?
I didn't say two-thirds. You've seen this slide. This is the this is the south access point between the post office and the fitness. And then the Knoll, what we started calling the Knoll. There were several developers that we worked with over the last year and a half, two, two years that really wanted to come to this site. Part of the thing that, you know, of course, you have to make an agreement and so forth, but they really wanted to do a mass grading of the whole project. And we know it's going to be difficult to maintain and protect a lot of the trees that are there. But we really didn't want to have the the Knoll graded down. And we think it's a nice feature and it works both from off-site view and onsite. So we've tried to tuck our development around that and and that's one of the natural areas that we think we that we think is important to conserve. Please go ahead, Sally, please. So you've heard about the integrated open space system and how that ties together with recreational opportunities and amenities. Go ahead. The architecture, you know, we're trying to find that that mountain contemporary feel with enough changes in materials and depth in the building so that at the same time, you know, they're interesting, but they're not overwhelming the 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 natural environment. And these are all relatively low in scale. You didn't mention Rampart survey, but they are at the north end of the right by the cul-de-sac and the entrance is right off the cul-de-sac behind them. And Eric and Rampart are our surveyors on this project. Go ahead. So the buffer, part of what's happening here is it was a requirement for twenty-five feet. We have thirty feet. But what's more important is you see, we've tried to orient all the buildings. So it's an end on end on situation to the highway. So it's not, you're not running parallel with the buildings. It's better for the people in the townhomes adjacent to the highway as well as for the view from the road. And I think that'll make a big difference in how it it also creates, as you can see, the open space between the buildings tying to the linear trail along the highway. And of course, it also loops back around internal to the project. Go ahead. This is, you know, buildings from the ends are not always as attractive and I would, as a former architect, I wish this was more attractive on the end. But I think what's going to happen here is you're not really ever going to see this elevation. You always see it from an oblique view. We've really broken up the the elevations all the way around three sixty. And this shows, this is the the apartment building, what we call a lodge, that's most that's immediately adjacent or the closest to the highway. And it's the two-story, it's the two-story building. So we dropped the scale down along along that side. Okay. So community-based parks, we're we realize that there's a significant cost in making these improvements, but also maintaining them in perpetuity. We're happy to commit to that after we kind of worked our way into this kind of a plan and we really liked the collaboration we had with Parks Advisory Group and other people in the community and discussing how this might work. We realized this is not a destination, but certainly with the number of people that will be living here, it can help take the load off of people going to other parks, maybe less traffic and also people in the local area where townhomes are being now built, you know, can walk over to this area and be a part of it. So we really like the way that's worked out. This, I'm I'm making sure you understand it was only, it's a thirty-foot height limitation. So we probably overdone. This, so I think I think Sally's touched on all this, the six point one seven acre, thirty thirty-three percent reduction in what could actually be built there in terms of maximum density. And and that's really the story. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions or comments?
I have one. Maybe, maybe two. So I'm guessing there's a typo in the planning commission meeting minutes. You're planning to start construction when? Twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three?
I think I said twenty-three. What is it?
Okay, it says twenty-three. I was just was trying to figure out if you're spring of next year or spring of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I said twenty-three because I'm pretty conservative and I know how long these things take.
Okay.
We have final plots, we have construction drawings. We have an equity partner. Yeah, so I did say twenty-three.
Okay.
Yeah. I wish it was faster. It's not like, it's not like fiber.
Did you have another question?
Um, no, that was I.
Anyone else?
Mr. Bestall, I don't even know where to begin because I I'm sitting here on council because of the piece of property just next to yours, Village of Tamarack. So I became aware of what the zoning was out there three years ago and I've been kind of monitoring when something was gonna bubble up from that. When I look at your design, I I think you've done a a marvelous job of whether you stumbled on it or it was brilliantly orchestrated. I think you've captured a lot of the sentiments that I heard and Sally heard back three years ago when Village of Tamarack. There were some concerns about the open space and and stuff. Your solution is kind of more in line with what the citizens had a vision of open space when you kept, when you add up the all the open spaces to get to that forty percent, it's kind of all clumped together. So it really gives an area of open space, which is a little different than what was done at Village of Tamarack. So I I see some lessons that learned in going through the Village of Tamarack and that development and 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 I'm anxious to see that one come to fruition, but I think you really hit a lot of wonderful things. That's the good. The bad. You know, I went through the packet and this one is for you. My next question is going to be for Sally. Todd Weissman made a suggestion and it's only a suggestion about, and I looked at all all the suggestions he had, but since safety is supposed to be our number one concern, he had brought up and spoken with you about the possibility of putting some split rail fences in a couple key places where you have the trail. I know where the Knoll is. That's probably not a worry where the kids might come out onto the highway. And then there are some that dip down that wouldn't be be so much, but there are a couple when I drive by that all the time that maybe some fencing, split rail or anything that you might be able to offer into your design just to increase the safety because you've got all that wonderful open space and walkways. I just would like to see that area stay safe when you put that many kids potentially into that area. I don't want to see any of them going out. That's the only comment really for yourself. Now Sally, I think Commissioners Brown, Carrick and Larson may have hit the nail on the head when they identified that the ratio, three quarters of the units are going to be one bedroom and only a quarter of them, two or more bedrooms. When I think back of all the the comments in the in the surveys from the comprehensive plan and everything, even going back to the two thousand and ten, what is the ratio, the need? Because we've been very careful about putting the multifamily right where you got it. And we've got the perfect multifamily development going right where we want it. But if we don't have the right unit types, the ratio, you know, only one bedrooms, which are really conducive to single or no children families. And and I keep hearing our workforce needs housing. Our citizens need family housing, but there's only thirty two-bedroom and there's eighty-two one-bedroom. What's the ratio in our comprehensive plan or all the research we've done on housing? What's the need? Did we get the correct ratio?
Oh, it's a great question and I'm not sure. I know what that correct ratio is. And it's really up to the private sector to do a market analysis to be able to determine what is best. But you're right, the planning commission raised that issue as well. And I'll let Mr. Bestall speak to that because they're the ones, the private sector market-driven analysis is apparently showing that they want more single one-bedroom, which become more affordable to the community as opposed to a two or three-bedroom.
It's a balance, isn't it? The thing that I, the thing that I mentioned at the planning commission was, I don't think you can turn your back on the townhomes that are there. And if you look at the townhomes, which are two and three-bedroom, you you have fifty-five, two and three, you have thirty-two bedroom apartments and in roughly, what is it, eighty-two or so of the one-bedroom apartments? So there's actually quite a blend on the site. Now, I'm I'm not, I don't think we're done with this project. I mean, I think we're we're trying to get it launched with you all and it may well be that we want to shift apartments. That is, you know, I don't mean go with more units as much as we may want to see, look at one-bedroom apartments and say, okay, let's make these two. And that's easily done within the module we have within these buildings. But at this point, we felt comfortable with, based on our feasibility on our market. You know, we look, for example, at three thousand students who come up here and there's really very, very little accommodations for them. And those might well be one and two, and they might have a child, but they might be, they might be a couple, they might be one person. So we looked at a lot of the different sectors and segments. And I don't disagree with your premise that we need to have the right mix. Right now, we feel pretty comfortable with it, but I think it's something that we're going to look at very carefully during the next six months to a year.
Are you going to reach out to Mr. Walmack? Because he, I think on the December ninth, he's going to be making the grand vision of his much anticipated student housing that he's going to be breaking ground on because he does have an obligation or a commitment that he would build student housing. And he has committed, at least in the newspaper, that he's starting that. I think it's April of two thousand and twenty-three where he's going to start building his dormitories, which means you're you're getting ready to move forward. Now, if you're saying it's not cast in stone, that ratio, if you find out that he is going to be building the student housing and what amount of student housing he might be taking into his own facility, you might end up with the wrong ratio at the end of the day where we still need some more multi-room apartments because the one-bedroom demand may have shifted over once he gets his dormitories built.
Can I just, let me butt in real quick. Do you have prior experience with development?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sure.
I, I, not very much. I know I look very young. And I have to live with that. But yeah, I've been doing this for a while and I both, you know, I started off as a planner. I was principal planner for the city of Scottsdale. So I I worked on the for nine years there. And then I went into architecture, then I went into planning, then project management and ended up in Colorado. And so I I'm doing four affordable projects right now in the city of Longmont. Both some are stacked flats and some are horizontal. But but the your point in in Meta Mayor and 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 members of the council, your point's well taken. And that's the, that's really the dilemma of a developer. We have long lead times, we have long cost carries and we're still trying to tweak the mix when we get there. So that's why I said to you, we're going to be looking over at this for the last, the next six months to twelve, not to increase density, but to see what our mix is within these buildings to make sure it works. You know, the one of the best projects I've seen had flex walls within their with, you know, where they have very small, very small bedrooms, sleeping areas, call them. But those walls can be flexible, so it opens up into that area, you know, and you see this a lot. It used to be just in urban areas with micro apartments, for example. And what we've done is try to make them at a good size, but you know, we're very cognizant of what you're talking about. In terms of the school and what they're going to do in the twenty-third, you know, the people that I work with, the owners here, they've talked to the school years ago. And there wasn't, you know, there wasn't a commitment at that point to to do something. And if there is now, that's great. But it's it's difficult in this setting to try to answer hypotheticals. All I can tell you is we're going to try to make this obviously an economic success and viable and sustainable over the long haul. And you know, right now, we kind of like what our mix is, but it's it's not, it won't be beyond tweaking, you know, and but that's where you will have review as a city. When we come in for our final plots and for our building permits. So, you know, the site plan itself, we feel really comfortable with and the building footprints and where they are and the and the mix of units and the fact that we have adequate parking. In fact, we would, we would make the case, we have too much parking because we've met your requirement.
And Jack, maybe, maybe Hillary actually answered my concern with what what you just brought up. This is the preliminary site. It's not the final building.
Correct.
It's not the walls being decided and locked in stone. And you've given me the words that I was wanting to hear. And what's important is I'm trying to represent the people listening out there because I read the comments. Oh, before we vote, I read the newspaper, the Courier. So if that's skewed my and you wish, yeah, if you want me recused from this vote, well, I will recuse myself. I have no, not a dog. And I did read the Courier two weeks ago and there was an article about it. I I think your project is great. But I've also seen Nextdoor's and Facebook posts for three years. What I've learned is, you know, and I'm not pressing you on this being attainable or affordable housing. You're going to set the, the market's going to set the price point. We are not here discussing whether this is attainable or affordable housing. And I want to make everybody listening, that's not the foundation of your development and how I will cast my vote. But I did read in the Courier, if you want me excused, I will. And thank you for clarifying that, that we're still looking at the mix of one and two bedroom because I think the commissioners brought up a very important concern as long as he's looking at it.
Right. Well, it's capitalism and freedom. They're going to use their freedom to do what they're allowed to do and they're going to hope to capitalize on it or they wouldn't do it. So.
But we have a responsibility to take care of the citizens.
We do, but they're the ones who are concerned about capacity far more than any of us because they don't want to do this project if they can't get it capitalized on. So if they think one bedrooms are what's going to work for them, I think they're going to know better than us. So that's, that, that part's not our job.
I'll just point out that we're just looking at a conditional use permit, a preliminary plat.
It's a preliminary, right.
Right.
Madam, and a mayor, we make one more comment to, to his, to the initial comment. In terms of protection, I can't answer the fence question. And yeah, I thought Todd has some really good points. I don't think we were quite far enough along in our thinking, you know, to really, but I think that we're, we're all about trying to make sure that, you know, there's safety along the highway. And I think that Sally's point was really well taken, that it's, there's a large right of way setback from the roadway section. Then there's a thirty foot, you know, open space buffer, but we need to do what's necessary for fencing. And I'm just, we're not a fan of, of a six-foot privacy fence, for example. Right. But I think, I think some, some good fencing and, and maybe it needs to be just in the areas where, you know, it's really easy to go out. But we'll look at that carefully before, you know, we do this final plan.
I just want Todd to know that we, council, we read these, these packets. And when we see a, a little simple thing like that, hey, Todd, you're right. Maybe, maybe I could ask him.
Well, and he had some other, you know, I, I spent, the only thing that I was concerned about was when I said, yes, I'm going to do that, then he made sure he went and met with Sally, then he not, I don't, it wasn't that he trusted, he didn't trust me, I don't think. But what, what I said to him was also was he was concerned about color of the buildings. He thought the buildings were good. He also talked about where we have certain types of play, play pocket parks. And it makes sense, for example, right on the edge of the knoll, should it be up on top of the knoll? Yeah, we're going to, I think this is all going to take some fine tuning. But I'd be, I, I believe the base, and those were all good points. I believe the basic bones of what we've got though, is going to give us, give us a lot to work with and, and get it, get it right.
Yeah, the key word here is preliminary.
Preliminary, yeah.
Yeah. Robert, go ahead.
Mr. Bestel, your namesake, your experience denotes your mate, your namesake, Jack Benny, he always having the thirty-ninth anniversary or the somewhat anniversary of his thirty-ninth year or so. And I am an Arizonan as well. And if you've had any involvement with Scottsdale City Planning, that speaks very well. That's a beautiful way that's been developed. Very, very.
It was a great time to be there.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I love your project. It's, it's, I really like it. I think it's well thought through. I appreciate the fact you haven't maximized the space with occupancy. So I like that. I have about a half a dozen questions, which some of them are some of the historical angst, which, well, the first one is, it is simple. It's like, in the overview, it says after the Tamarack Parks developed, there'll be five smaller lots remaining. Can you show me on a map where they are and how much build out that looks like? And maybe that's a Sally question. I don't know.
I think it is. It's a Sally question.
Yeah, page forty-eight on our, in our.
So five lots, there are two, I'm trying to find a good example here.
Color land use?
Yeah, maybe right up. Let me go to the zoning map. So there are two lots in front of the Black Hills Energy Building. They bought all three of these and just developed on the larger site. And then this lot that's tucked in next to the apartments is also undeveloped. There is a flag lot next to the Rampart Surveys and the last, there's one right between the survey building and the Fitness Club. Also, this commercial lot on the corner, but that one is totally encumbered almost with the floodplain. So it's going to take a little work.
Okay. So it doesn't represent a lot of extra traffic flow necessarily from the looks of what you've got there?
Well, and I think all of the parcels in terms of their, of their zoning have been taken into the modeling, you know, of, of, for the traffic modeling of the whole, of the whole area. Just like ours was, I think we had two hundred and forty-eight potential units and it was modeled at two twenty-eight and we're at one sixty-seven. So I think all the parcels have been in that, in that mix with LSA, with the traffic engineer.
So on to traffic, I see that you've got that, you know, for me, this issue, and it goes, it precedes your, even your year and a half working on this, is that just the safety on that curve and coming into that area of, of that area of Tamarack and, and, and research. And one of our former council members was a traffic guy. That's his whole life was traffic. And he sounded the alarm that we weren't looking at this carefully enough on that intersection. Now, I know Sally, you've gone through all of the, you know, C dot reviews and everything else on this, but I, I noticed with this, you've got an emergency exit going out into the highway. Is that going to necessitate some sort of flashing red lights or something whenever that's being used? Because you're right on a corner.
Uh, I don't think so, but that's up to the, the city and the C dot. What that is, it's a gated emergency access only. So if we have a fire, for example, coming from a certain direction and people need to get out that way, I'm sure that public safety people generally are the ones that are going to stop traffic on the highway and, and let people out or in or, you know, whatever's going on. So that's going to be more of the public safety officials call, I think, whether you all, I mean, I, I didn't think that it warranted a light to be installed. But, you know, I, we haven't, you know, that, that may be something that you want to consider. I, I don't know.
Well, for me, where this goes is this whole, this whole intersection, and, you know, this is probably more of a Sally comment than, than a you, but this whole intersection was allegedly approved by the city twenty-five years ago. And it was, became an emergency before some of us came on council. When it really wasn't an emergency, but the funding of it is something that concerns me is how, that the city has taken on a great deal of burden in this and I don't see it equitably shared by the developers in the area. So I'd like a comment on that.
So in the mid nineties, the city established transportation capital fees on new development and the intent or thought behind that was that those fees could be then used to match the millions of dollars that it takes for Highway twenty-four and Highway sixty-seven improvements. If the city were to assess fees to cover the cost of these arterial improvements, they would be out of the roof. So the hope was in the nineties that we would be able to move incrementally with C dot, with PPACG to be able to do these highway improvements at a optimum timeline. Other priorities got in the way and economics and other things. And you know how competitive it is with PPACG funding? So unfortunately, this didn't get taken care of. Actually, in the year two thousand, when these improvements were triggered by the post office and the police operations center.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I guess my concern with this project is if C dot's just coming to an approval of that turn lane three months ago, has this been considered by the planning department and by the planning board in terms of the cost that it, it costs us in this new project, which is for all intents and purposes, none of this was on the table back at the time that that was approved, or was it?
But twenty years ago, more than twenty years ago, it was the city's police operations center that triggered the improvements.
So you're saying the city's taking the response, the position and the, and the position that it's because the police station is there that we, we're owning the road, basically?
We're owning the obligation to do the highway improvements. But there, there, you know, there'll be a hundred and four thousand dollars from this development. I know the project is one point two million. We've already collected about, about seventy thousand from the post office and the other little developments, the church or the school. And then Village at Tamarack did contribute sixty-eight thousand dollars in addition to their transportation fees. So, you know, it, the developments have contributed.
Okay, thank you. The, so, so we don't really know yet where his, where his emergency egress is, whether that's going to require flashing red light or something like that in times of operation. Or is that?
Yeah, we know.
Is that outside your scope?
Where it's planned here on the northern end by the parking lot. That's a good location for ingress egress. As far as the specifications for that, it will be determined by C dots.
The other traffic question I have is at the, where the school, the T intersection is likely going to be there on the inside where they enter into your, into your complex. It, has there, it did, I just wonder about school, the volume of school traffic versus, or in, in, and homeowner traffic there. Is that kind of, is that an issue? Has that been looked, I mean, I guess it's been looked at, but it's just a question I have for you.
Well, yeah, traffic's always an issue. It would be my quick answer and you know, I don't think, you know, these are kind of locations that were inherited and over, you know, so we, we have, we have what we have. It's kind of what we ended up looking at. The good news is that we have fewer units on the south end. And I think that they'll matriculate to the cul-de-sac. And so the traffic will be going more north, south, which is a much better safety orientation in terms of the, you know, the, the traffic coming back and forth from the school. But that's, you know, that's kind of how the thing works through. And, and generally, you know, the, the most difficulty will be the morning peak probably. Because, you know, the school that's out earlier. So but we didn't, you know, we, we kind of had to use what we had. And that was that, that was the, the easement that was, that was there.
I have a, I have a pet interest in roundabouts. And I just looked at that and thought, gee, wouldn't that just free up that there? And is there enough space on each of your, you know, each of your corners to look at that?
Quick answer would be no, but yeah, roundabouts are great. It's tight there.
Yeah.
And I.
We've also signed this area as a school zone. So during the day, they're required to go twenty miles an hour.
And otherwise, isn't it twenty-five miles an hour? So it's not racing, raging traffic.
Right by the police station, right by the police.
That's a plus.
You could certainly get a traffic officer there. Well, thank you. Those are, those are my concerns on it. Have some other ones, but I'm, I like your project a great deal and I'm glad to hear we're talking with Councilmember Neil, that you're still got some things you're kind of fine, fine tuning on it. But you're welcome, you're welcome into the community. I think it's a great project. I look forward to watching it unfold.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time too. We appreciate it.
Yes, very much so.
Thank you. All right. Before we move to any, do any motions, I have two people signed up for public comment because I remember.
I'm so proud.
I know. Before you do that though, actually, I did have one question for staff. I am, I'm sorry. I was going to do my questions.
Because now I'm going to forget.
I know, I was going to do my question, one for him and then one for staff, but I didn't. So Kip, I just have a quick question for you on the water taps.
Hey, y'all are going to have to remind me.
I will when I finish. How many taps will this project take?
One tap per unit.
One tap per unit. Okay. And we have five hundred in the bank, is that correct?
As of the start of this year, we had just over five hundred.
Okay.
And then we have to develop more water as part of our build out anyways. So this project would require to come back to council for a tap allotment approval. And I would have to take taps from the single family bank and ask to them to be transferred to the multifamily bank.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Now you can do your public comment. You don't have a sec, I thought you had a second question.
No, just a single.
Very good. Thanks. All right. I have Mac McVicker signed up first.
Good evening. I think you all know me. I'm Mac McVicker, thirteen, seven, one, nine, Hetty Road, Woodland Park, Colorado. I want to say to Mr. Bestel, your plan on, on paper looks great. I hope you can pull it off. I walk around quite a bit. I've walked sidewalks, if you can call them that, on US twenty-four, all the way from sixty-seven down to McDonald's, crossed the street and went back the other side. And I'm glad to see public access to your walking trail here. Will there be public parking access within the compound?
Yeah, we just need you at the mic because we have the online audience and they can't hear us.
Why don't you sit at the table? You can sit at that table.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Let's see, just pull that mic up to you.
So I guess the question you have is specifically what?
Well, this is to me going to be almost like a garden spot to walk around in Woodland Park. We have a lot of streets that don't have a sidewalk on either side. We have this beautiful thing called Centennial Trail, which I've walked from here to Manitou Lake. I've skied it to Manitou Lake. Thank you, Sally. For those of you that don't know the history, this is largely the work of Sally Riley. But we have a lot of streets in here and subdivisions that don't have a sidewalk either side. And I can see people flocking to this, to walk within these almost manicured grounds that we don't have much of in Woodland Park. I just want to know, will I have a place to park?
The answer is, the quick answer would be no. And there's several reasons, but I mean, it's not a hard no, it's just no. For, there's several reasons. One, we have two hundred and eighty-three parking spaces for the multifamily project. And we think that's overparked. Now, we're not, this is not a transit community, fully understand that. But what we're finding is even the non-transit multifamily locations, there, there are not nearly as many cars utilizing the parking spaces. So we're, I'm, the second thing is, this is meant to be a local park. So we want to encourage walk-in, you know, we'd, and, you know, I've looked at places where I could put a couple, three or pocket, a couple, three spaces here and there. You know, and that would be a possibility. But I think that what we're thinking is, you know, this is more of a fifteen-minute radius. People walk over. And so we're not really trying to add more impervious surface. That's been our approach.
And, and I understand everything you're saying. Problem is.
Mac, let me just remind you too, really quick, it's also private property still.
I, I understand that.
It's not going to be public, just like the apartments by Safeway, how people like to cut through their parking lot and the apartments have the right to cut that traffic off.
Okay.
So just, just a reminder, it's, even though they're being generous with their land and creating the parks, it will still remain private property.
But, but they were allowed a variance from the city requirement to have a sidewalk. And if they don't have to put in a sidewalk and allowing us public access to the trail they're putting in, which is great, don't get me wrong. My whole thing is I'd love to walk that. And you might as well. But and I realize it is private property. You may require your residents to have a, a parking sticker or something so you can easily identify people that don't live there. And I wouldn't blame you for doing that. But it's an island. We have no other sidewalks on that side of sixty-seven, period. You have to go, let's see, once you go past Evergreen County line, there are no sidewalks on sixty-seven on the west side.
So I have a question, Mac. Do you drive to other locations where there's side?
Do you drive to other locations where there's sidewalks to walk on the sidewalk? Aren't you typically already walking to, when you use sidewalks? I'm just curious, I was just trying to think about how, how that, how that works.
Yeah, like when I, the day my wife and I walked twenty-four from here to McDonald's, we parked in, in the urgent care clinic parking lot, because it was closed that day.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, we were on private property, but nobody cared.
Right.
I parked up here at Pike's Peak Federal Credit Union and walked up to Manitou Lake on Centennial Trail. Again, I was on private property, but they were closed. This place isn't going to close. And they're going to have a beautiful place to walk, I can just see it. Any of you that have ever, just think about it, when you drive from the north to the south on sixty-seven, you come around that curve, what do you see? You see Pike's Peak in all its glory. I've, I've seen it hundreds of times and I'm still amazed by it. Just love it. As the snow accumulates and melts and everything, I could see myself walking on his property quite a bit. Just to come around that curve, around the knoll, and all of a sudden there's Pike's Peak. That's, that makes it worth it, right there. I'm just asking, since they don't have to put in a sidewalk, could we have a few parking spots for trail walkers?
There's the, there is the post office.
Mayor Proton, point of order. Isn't public comment supposed to just make comments and not have backwards and forwards? Only because it's about eight minutes into it.
That's very true.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. So.
I was just trying to, to, to refresh everybody, what are the big selling points of this town? And I enjoy talking to summer visitors, they enjoy walking around this town. You can always tell them, we're in t-shirts and shorts and they've got their sweater on and we know they're from out of town. So I, I'm just trying to determine if anything, since you're still in preliminary, if there's anything that'd be done for some, call it, public parking on private property?
We'll consider it.
Thank you, sir.
Very good, we have one more signed up for public comment and that is Dave Banker and I believe he is on Zoom, if he's still there.
He is, Rob, can you please allow him in as a panelist? And then we also have another hand up after that.
Okay, you'll have to remind me, maybe.
Mr. Banker, you may speak.
I think I had to find the mic button here and unmute that, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Well, hi, my name is David Banker and I'm a, an owner in the Village at Tamarack, part of the LLC that's developing that project. And I'm commenting here, since Tamarack Park is our neighbor. You know, first of all, I'd like to say that, well, just a little bit about myself, I don't live in Woodland Park. I'm an investor there, I do have like three different properties or part of three different ones. And I only sort of recently came to that and it's just because I have a long association with Colorado Springs and the Woodland Park area. I am a military veteran and so I flew out of Colorado Springs for many years in the three oh second airlift wing there. But I live in Castle Rock. So I wish, I want to say that I think the Tamarack Park development is a really nice one. And, you know, part of me kind of looks at that and says, ooh, I wish we could kind of done something like that, because it is pretty nice. I'm still really excited about Village of Tamarack though. And what I wanted to bring up was really just the issue of the intersection with Tamarack Parkway and sixty-seven. And I know it's been talked about a lot and it, it's, you know, really on everybody's mind. You know, driven out there quite a few times myself. And, you know, that intersection, I'm really excited that the city's going to spend some money there and finally do some improvements to it, because it's pretty rough. It can be tough to get out onto sixty-seven from Tamarack. So, but what I want to talk about though is the transportation capital fee. And, you know, two years ago when we started VAT, we, we understood that we'd have to pay that fee and we did. But at the same time, right after we bought the property, we were told that we'd have to pay the full cost of fixing the intersection to include putting turn lights and traffic signals. So that was kind of like a one million dollar slam immediately that, that was a burden on that property. It actually looked like, you know, as an investor in that, that was all going to go south very quickly. So what ended up happening was, we had a negotiation and we came to a settlement agreement. And that agreement was that we would pay an additional sixty-eight thousand dollars, which Sally Riley mentioned earlier, to pay for the improvements to the intersection. And now Tamarack Park's going in and they're doing nothing more than paying their, their transportation capital fee. So, and I guess Black Hills Energy didn't pay anything extra either. And it looks a little bit capricious to me and it certainly chaps me if we're going to be the only one contributing to that. So can Sally address that?
Like me to address it?
Please. I agree.
You really have to go back to the initial submittal of the Village at Tamarack. And it's, it's all about timing and sequence of events. And that when the Village of Tamarack did come in, yes, the city staff was aware that there was need, needed to have highway improvements. What the city staff was unaware of was that the city had signed an agreement, an access permit in nineteen ninety-five, saying that when warrants prevailed, that the city was obligated to make those improvements. And it was triggered with the post office and the police station. However, the city did not make the improvements. So this is all happening during the negotiations or the process of review of Village at Tamarack. So what the Village at Tamarack investors volunteered to contribute an additional sixty-eight thousand dollars toward the improvements on Highway sixty-seven, knowing that the city would have to pick up whatever balance there was to that project. And there were other negotiations. At first, we were hoping that the Village at Tamarack engineer would oversee the project. They did not want to do that. So it was a negotiated amount and it just is not, the city cannot expect subsequent developers to make additional contributions. We don't have any grounds to require that. The city would be overreaching. But at the time that Village of Tamarack was coming through, it was a negotiated additional contribution and they volunteered to pay it.
So I just, I'm going to interrupt this topic real quick, because I want to be real careful with this being quasi-judicial and that particular topic. I hear the issue that Mr. Banker is raising. I believe if there, if, if, if that LLC feels that there is an issue or something was done unfairly or inappropriately, that is not for this particular topic. And I hear the concern being raised, if, if, if there is something that needs to be discussed, that needs to be discussed amongst the city at a different time. So, but I hear how he believes it could be tied to this topic, I understand it. But unfortunately, because this is quasi-judicial for this council, that is not an issue we're going to address at this moment. It can always be brought to the agenda, it can be brought to council's attention at another moment. But we're not going to talk about that particular topic at this time. I want to stay on target with this being the preliminary plat. And we hear that issue, but it is not something we're going to discuss at this moment. So, Mr. Banker, I appreciate that you raised the concern, I hear your concern. But at this moment, it is not something this council can address.
Okay, I'm fine with that, I, I, I just wanted to bring it up and we can certainly discuss it offline at another time, so I'm fine with it.
Sure. And I do, I think it's an issue that you are welcome to raise with staff and the city manager and the city planner. But right now, we can't address that.
Okay, well, I will say that it was helpful for his comments to get perspective and the clarity of what Sally said, that basically the city discovered they have liability in there or responsibility in there. And that helps me understand why it is as it is. So that, thank you for that answer and thank you, Mr. Banker, for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Mayor Proton Labar, we have Joe Fury. Would like to make a comment.
Sure.
Rob? Mr. Fury? You may speak, sir.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I, I live nearby the Tamarack Park development. And I, I had a, I've got a concern about lighting up our nighttime mountain sky. And I've brought this up at the neighborhood meeting, as well as the planning commission meeting. And I was happy to hear Mr. Bestow say that the development intends to use what they call cutoff lighting, so that light is projected downward rather than up into the sky. I haven't seen this documented anywhere, so I just, I just wanted to mention it in front of city council that, you know, the developers did say they were going to use cutoff lighting for all their external lighting. And that's the end of my comment, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
That is the city standard and that it will be reviewed with the final submittals.
Right. Okay, any further comments? All right, council, any further comments?
Great project.
All right.
I move to approve ordinance, can we do that? I move to approve ordinance of fourteen oh nine, series two, two thousand twenty-one, for the conditional use permit, primary plat and site plan overview for Tamarack Park, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll second. Thank you. Neil?
Oh, let me sing.
See, this is where the electronic voting comes in.
Yes, Jack, you get one vote from me.
That's an affirmative, sir.
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, my best, very good. Or was it Mr. Benny?
Okay, it's nine twenty, everyone was patient and we'll go ahead and take a break. Do you guys need five or ten minutes?
Five.
Kelly just outvoted all of you, it's five. Back at nine twenty-five.
You guys always get your way.
Does anyone need a refreshment?
I still have two.
Make it up. So nine twenty. All right, we're back. Better than ever. Right, we're on to nine B, and that's the approval of ordinance fourteen oh seven, and Erin is our presenter.
Just so council knows, it's eleven twenty-eight in Florida.
Oh.
And that's where Erin is.
You better get.
How to put that plug in there.
On our time zone.
I'm trying, we're gonna be there soon. We're gonna be there.
You can, you can always remind us, Erin, you'd be like, oh, guys, it's one o'clock here. That'll help me make them wrap it up.
Oh, goodness.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, first I have ordinance fourteen oh seven. Which is an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the general fund for the budget year of two thousand twenty-two. So the city manager prepared and submitted the budget to the city council on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And over the course of several council meetings and work sessions, staff and council have reviewed and discussed the proposed draft of the recommended two thousand twenty-two budget. Changes have been made to the initial budget, and the ordinances were approved on initial postings, and they're set for a public hearing tonight.
All right, council, do you have any questions or comments for Erin?
Sure. Do you want to go first?
I don't have it.
Oh, you, you don't have any?
I do not have any this time.
Okay.
So first I'd like to say. Well done, well done, Erin, in pulling this together from afar, so we look forward to you making your way here to Woodland Park very soon. Given the parameters of where we've gone into this budget, I think it's, it's, it's a good budget. I would have liked to have seen us to be able to actually compartmentalize and pay off one of the debts. But I see that's a work in progress, so. I would like to see that continue. I would have liked to have seen, we have had such fabulous revenues in two thousand twenty-one. I would like, would have liked to seen us give some back to the people. I was for a recommendation of a mill levy reduction. And I think with the number, with the amount of revenues, of strong revenues that we've seen, particularly coming out of COVID. That I'd like us to focus on what we can do to recognize the, the source of our revenues. And. Make a recognition that the city's not, not only has the city done well, but we need to remember that our citizens all, haven't all done so well. And I guess my comment to that would be. Someone recently told me, he said, yeah, the city's doing really good. Look who's got the Christmas lights up around town. It's the city, it's not the businesses. And that was just a real simple comment. It's like, what can we do to stimulate a cooperation? That we're recognizing the benefit, and if they're not putting out Christmas lights, it's saying, it's just a simple way saying, can't afford to do that this year. So I just want to lay a marker to say, I think this is a good budget. I'm happy we paid off, we've allocated so much towards debt. But I would like to see us give it back to the community, and. So that's my comment.
Very good. Council, any, anyone else?
And there's also coun- council member Alfieri does not ever hand up, but I want to make sure she is acknowledged in case she.
Yes, Stephanie, if you have something to say, just butt in, because I can't see you, so just holler anytime if you need to. Okay, can I get a motion then?
I will move to approve ordinance fourteen oh seven, series two thousand twenty-one, as presented for the general fund for the year twenty.
The public hearing?
Oh, yeah. Oh, because somebody had to remind me.
Wow, we both blew it.
That's why.
Where's my backup, guys?
Yes.
So there's two people in the audience, and I don't see them jumping for.
There's nobody on Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Nina. Okay, I apologize. Can you make the motion over again?
I sure can. Thank you, Nina, for correcting me and the rest of us. I move to approve ordinance fourteen oh seven, series two thousand twenty-one, appropriating funds to the general fund for budget year twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
Thank you. Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, one.
All right, and now moving on to nine C. For approval of ordinance fourteen oh eight, and Erin is also presenter for that.
Okay, ordinance number fourteen oh eight, we have an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds. In the amount and for the purpose is set forth below for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, for the two thousand twenty-two budget year for all funds except the general fund.
Very good. Council, questions, comments? Robert? Okay.
Rusty? I'll thank Michael for sending up that updated. I think it's the four, four fifteen or the.
Two fifteen.
Yeah, thank you for that information.
Councilmember Case. After Robert was so gracious in thanking Erin, I'd like to thank Erin and Michael and the rest of staff for all their hard work in putting this budget together and bearing with us.
And I'll second that.
Everything. I just wanted to thank everyone involved, because I know it takes a village.
Thank you, Hillary. Oh, I'm sorry.
You're welcome, Robert.
Wrong Hillary. The other.
Get into knee.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve ordinance.
Wait, wait.
I remembered. My two audience members are not dancing to get to the podium. Is there anyone online?
No, ma'am.
All right, very good. Okay. I will make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen oh eight, series two thousand twenty-one, and ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds as written.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Alfieri?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries four to.
Right, moving on to ten, new business. We are at ten A, approve resolution number eight eight three, and Erin is once again the presenter.
Okay, resolution eight eight three, series two thousand twenty-one. We have a resolution levying general property taxes for the year of two thousand twenty-one. To help to free the cost of government for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, for the two thousand twenty-two budget year. So the city's mill levy rate is fifteen point seven five mils, and with this resolution, it would remain the same since two thousand twenty. The preliminary assessed valuation within the city is one hundred and thirty-four million, eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. And the resulting property tax revenue generated based based on this preliminary assessed valuation in the two thousand twenty-two budget is two million, one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Okay, council, questions, comments?
I would like to see it drop one point seven five mil.
Very good. Anything else?
I'd like to see a mill levy reduction next year, if, if everything goes as planned, and we are on target for paying off a major debt. I would be willing to entertain some of those discussions for next year's budget, Robert, because I think. The citizens would like to see, you know, a little bit of a relief when we're finally able to do that.
I'll just make my annual statement that I will support a discussion with all of the taxing entities. To include fire, library, ambulance, the county, et cetera. Once the life of the DDA is complete, and that those interrupted revenues return to the taxing authorities. And we can see where we sit at that time and have a more lengthy conversation with everyone involved. And do something significant that will actually affect the pocketbooks of our, our citizens.
You're here, Kelly.
Thank you.
You're here.
I agree, because twenty bucks isn't going to make a difference.
No.
I, I have a comment.
Buy you a hamburger.
Councilmember Alfieri?
Yes, Rusty, I know council member Neil, you said you'd like to consider this when it's feasible to do so. I would like to point out, it is very feasible to do this right now. Even dropping the mill levy by point seven five, which is roughly a hundred thousand dollars, could have been easily absorbed within this budget. We had unexpected excess revenue of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand this year. No one even talked about taking that money and. Turning it over into a mill levy reduction. The only talk we had is how and where do we spend the money? We have record sales tax revenue, record property tax revenue. We have record revenue more than we've ever seen. And the idea to say that we can't now, and it's not feasible to consider any sort of mill levy reduction, I'm sorry, that's just not true. That's all I have.
I'd like to clarify, it's actually more than a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. We had excess of what, one point three something million in our first? I know we've allocated, and I'm not saying we didn't allocate it, but. And we, and a million of that went towards debt reduction, but still more than a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so you're, I agree with your comment wholeheartedly and more.
Correct, so the over one million was due to excess revenue and increased property taxes. The one hundred and fifty-eight thousand was, correct me if I'm wrong, money that was unspent that we didn't, or that we did not expect to have. That we had an option to choose what to do with.
Michael, is she, is she referring to like employee expenses? We didn't have things like that, is that what she?
I apologize, I'm not entirely clear where the one fifty-eight's coming from.
Or maybe Erin knows.
I do not either.
That was mentioned in one of the most recent work sessions that we had in excess of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
I don't recall that, but I, I. I'm sure that there's a combination of things that led to the reserves that we were able to have this year. Lack of the ability to procure supplies, to do repairs, lack of the ability to hire staff. The supply chain, I think, contributed a lot to it. It was not a reassessment and an increase in property tax for this past year. There may have been some incidental. Based on, on maybe new builds and things like that that came on board, that caused property taxes to not, excuse me, to not. Be exact, like what we see, things come and go and cause that to kind of fluctuate, even in a non-assessment year. But. We've had a, a record year, I guess. But you never know what is going to come from year to year. We've had record years before, and we've had some pretty slim. And difficult years as well. They come and go, just like the economy fluctuates, so. I, I've also said in the past that I will not support ever something, just pulling something off the hip. For a reduction, it requires analysis and a basis with which to make decisions. And, and that, when we do have those conversations, that would be what I would look to for us to make good sound judgment based on data. But anyway, again, I compliment you all, and thank you for your hard work.
I, I, can you hear me?
We can.
I did find my notes. It was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, that was more than what was budgeted. Or the audited of twenty twenty is what my notes say. This is what was referenced.
On balance.
I, Erin, I see you shaking your head.
Yes.
We can see your head, Erin.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
So there is that excess, and the council member Case's comments, I would just mention that. Of course, analysis to make sure we're not putting ourselves in a bad position is fine, but I think with over two million dollars of revenue reserves. My question would be, how many of our citizens can say in their household budget, they have such a reserve, such a savings account? As the city does, comparative to their income versus the, their savings and the city's revenue compared to the city's reserves? It, it's quite obvious, this city is doing very, very well with revenue. And the idea that we can't even manage to find a hundred thousand dollars. In our budget to cut in a budget, in the general fund of twelve, thirteen million, when we have excess and unexpected revenues? The excuse that we can't manage to find that for a small mill levy reduction, I would have entertained anything. And. Again, council member Case, to your comments, to say it, it needs analysis, I don't disagree, but I would also ask you, up until last year. Why was it the city never decreased the mill levy in nearly thirty years? In all that time, through the nineties, you're telling me that it was never possible? It's because the government wants to take as much money as they can, and they will fight tooth and nail to keep it all the time.
Thank you for your opinion. I can't answer that question. And, and I, I can personally say that I have never one time in. My experience with the city for twenty-five years, have I ever had one citizen come to me and ask me to support a mill levy reduction? There are ways we can give back to our citizens. We can do a rebate, we can do a one-time rebate and consider it annually. There are many ways, but to do something permanent that we will never get back, I think is irresponsible and requires careful thought. And, and certainly I would love to entertain, and I think everybody on this council would entertain a conversation about some sort of rebate or something similar. That may not be the perfect word for it, but that's a conversation we can certainly have. I just, and, and you know, I. The whole comments about government won't ever do anything or give anything back. You know, I, I just have to say that the government or this board, I can, I know each of you. Listen to folks and citizens' comments and take them to heart, as do I, and I appreciate that. And the balance that this board brings, so thank you to my fellow council members.
I, I would just.
Hillary, thank you.
I would correct one statement that you made to say that you've never had a citizen come to you and request that you support a mill levy decrease is completely false. Because I. is completely false, because I.
Thank you. I'm glad you keep track of me.
I, as a citizen.
I'm gonna go ahead and move on.
I sat on council.
Councilmember Alfieri.
And asked for you to support something like that. So I'd like to point out that that is a false statement.
I apologize, Stephanie. I've had one person. Thank you to the citizens.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to end the back and forth and council member Neil, do you have any comments you wanted to make? Are you good? Okay, council member Nakai, any comments? Okay, Robert, you got yours in, right? All right.
I just have one. I do have one comment. I agree with Kelly.
Okay. And
Public comments?
Okay. Anyhow. Yep. I don't see either of my audience members dancing to the podium to participate. Suzanne, do you have anyone signed up?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number eight eight three, series twenty twenty one, certifying the mill levy for the twenty twenty two budget year.
I will second.
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
LaBarre?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
No.
Alfieri?
Absolutely not.
Motion carries four to. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Erin, for your presentation and hanging out with us this late.
Good night.
Thank you.
You're free to go unless you have any reports. All right, so moving on to number eleven, we're at reports, and I just have a couple of announcements for dates. This Friday is the Winter Day in the Park and the City Tree Lighting. That is December third, this Friday at Memorial Park. There's a schedule of events. It starts at three thirty with Winter Day in the Park petting zoo, Candy Cane Lane, pictures with Santa, hot chocolate and candy. And at five o'clock, there'll be a sing along with Santa and the elf scramble. And at five thirty, it is the lighting of the tree. So we'll have that, and it looks like they are still looking for some sponsors if you happen to be interested. And you can contact Sarah Minton at seven one nine six eight seven five two two five, and that's Sarah Minton. If you are interested in being a sponsor still for the event. We also have Saturday. We have breakfast with Santa, the Kiwanis Breakfast. That'll be at the Ute Pass Cultural Center from eight AM until eleven AM. And we have the parade. Okay, I'll let Catherine talk about the parade. And then on December fourteenth, it is Chamber Business After Hours, and that will be hosted at Tweeds. And I think I got the ball.
What?
Oh, yeah, and I think we won't have the December sixteenth council meeting, so I'm gonna go ahead and wish everyone happy holidays now, and I hope you have a lovely Christmas, and we will be back before New Year's. Will we be back before New Year's Eve? No, we won't. So have a rockin' New Year's Eve, too.
And there's an event at the cultural center if interested for New Year's Eve.
Oh, yeah, tell us.
Do you have an event at the cultural center?
Starts at some time.
I bet it's on the thirty first of December.
At night.
What I will do at night, I can promise counsel, I will send you the information. I believe it's fifty dollars a person, eighty dollars a couple. It includes refreshments, dinner, not dinner, refreshments, dancing.
Will it be on the city website?
It's already on.
Tell us.
Show it on the screen, Rob.
Doors will open at seven PM on the thirty first for a seven thirty PM start time. And let's see, gotta be twenty one. There'll be dancing, drinks and dinner. Cocktail attire attire is the perfect way to dress for this fun night. During the evening, there will be a cash bar, just dance band. And dinner will be provided by Salt of the Earth Catering.
Very good. And that's on the city website in case anyone didn't catch it.
Yes. I could do a cumber bud.
That would be excellent. Yes, only if your bow tie matches. All right, council member Case?
I have nothing. Thank you.
I don't remember Nakai.
You don't think. Right, so.
Main Street Shop Small Saturday was successful. They gave out a hundred bags with nineteen businesses supplying coupons, and they sold forty three of their Christmas ornaments. Saturday, December fourth, is the Lighter Set Christmas Parade, which starts at six PM over by Fiesta Mexicana at the corner of Midland Avenue and Highway twenty four. And it ends down by Tweed's, basically Grace Avenue. Road closures start around four PM behind all the businesses. I can't think of the name of that road. Is it Henrietta where the park is?
It is.
Yeah. And then, let's see, immediately following the parade at the Ute Pass Cultural Center will be the Woodland Park Wind Symphony supplying music. The Mike's Crazy Hat Contest, remembering Mike Williams, will be done again, and cookies and cocoa will be provided by Daybreak and the Pike's Peak Rotary. Charter review, we have the attorneys drafting the initial ordinances for conflict of interest, penalties for violating the charter, oath of office, council vacancies, changes to gender from all male positions to general titles, and then the mayor authorization of city manager signature amounts. We've moved the next meeting to December twentieth at five thirty, so it's next week instead of the following week. And that's all I have. Very good. Councilmember Neil?
That was December twentieth. Thank you. I have no liaison reports. My meetings all kick off next week.
Oh.
So January reports will be fun.
We'll wait with bated breath. Councilmember Zulawaga.
So PBACG, we've got busy week coming up tomorrow. We've got a retreat and then get to know new members and vision casting and stuff. And we have a monthly meeting on Wednesday. And Sally can probably speak to it more than I can, but next week we've got a meeting at the sheriff's office to review. Can you kind of help me fill me in with that? My calendar is not in front of me, so I can't think.
It's a tri-county plan for multimodal visioning into the future so that it's not just our planning document for the the urban area. It's for Park County, Teller County, and El Paso.
And and do you mind me sharing our meeting coming up? And so another key part of this, particularly the transfer of Sally to the new person taking her place, is we're meeting to talk about the reliever route, because from what I understand, we have like three or four different alternatives that would have been suggested in the past. Is that right? Kind of drafts of it could go here, could go there sort of thing.
Yes.
So I'd like to pick Sally's brains on that, to have that, to be able to take to PBACG, but also to take to this tri-county meeting at the sheriff's office to just help the us in the region get a buy-in from other from other groups. So I think it's kind of pivotal. I'm pretty excited about it. So, yeah, thank you. That's all.
Very good. Councilmember Alfieri?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you for attending.
Yep, it was a little bit of a rush, but definitely made it mostly on time.
All right. City manager. Oh, city attorney. Nita, do you have anything?
I don't. Thank you. And I see everyone. Sorry, I couldn't be there, and it feels weird on December second saying Merry Christmas, but Merry Christmas.
You can sing.
I was just gonna say. I don't have a joke about not saying a joke, but.
So I have a few things. Is, do we have a consensus then that we're okay to cancel the sixteen meeting staff is okay with that?
I'm good.
May have planned it. So very importantly, what do you get when you cross a Christmas tree with a nightcap?
Ooh.
Pineapple.
Before you get to the punchline, I missed the first part.
What kind of motorcycle is Santa Claus, right?
Oh. My Santa Claus that's under my tree writes a Harley Davidson.
Well, mine writes a Holly Davidson. And Rusty, what, what, sorry, council member Neil, what if Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus had a child, what would its name be? Ask you this because you're, you, we were talking about contracts.
A clause? Oh, clause. Some form of clause.
Had a child.
A child.
A child. Wouldn't it be subordinate clause?
Yes.
Definitely subordinate clause.
I'll, I'm, I'm done. No.
Yeah, that was good.
Don't encourage me. So this is quite an auspicious meeting because this is Sally Riley's final meeting after thirty six years in the chair.
We should.
No stop.
Tonight was the night for final countdown.
Oh, I can still do it. So we we wanted to mark the fact that this is her finer final council meeting. She's been counting down since two thousand fifteen.
Thirty six years ago.
But Sally, we will be celebrating Sally in earnest on January twentieth in in advance of that council meeting, I understand. So we, it is, it is bittersweet. We are very happy for her, but she's also the worst because she's leaving. So thank you, Sally, for hanging in here with the city of Woodland Park for the long haul and doing such great work.
Thank you so much. It's been my pleasure. I've had an incredible career and look forward to my retirement. Michael, may I give you a couple of details about that evening?
Please.
Thank you. As the city manager said, it's January twentieth. We will be gathering here in City Hall at five thirty PM. We will be having refreshments, some nice light appetizers and different things like that. We will also, it's open to the public. We will also have as part of our agenda a goodbye farewell to Sally as an item, agenda item on the agenda for you where Sally will be able to speak, and I think she's making a PowerPoint or she's, you know, she wants to do it her way, and she, this is the way she wants to do it, and so we're honoring that. She'll share a PowerPoint, and people can speak, the community, if they'd like, and it'll be a very, very nice evening, so.
So that's the fourth Thursday of the month?
Yes, yes.
Third, third, third Thursday.
First and third, yeah, Thursday.
Oh, it's actually when we have a council?
Yes, right before at five thirty.
Sorry, I missed that part.
I cannot wait to see what's in your PowerPoint.
Yeah.
And it has been such a pleasure working with you all these years.
Thank you, Kelly. And I will second that as a citizen and as a council member.
And by that same token, we we are happy to announce that we will, there is no replacing Sally, of course. But we are very happy to announce we've hired a new planning director, Karen Schmink. I don't know if Karen is.
She is.
She is.
Do you want to bring her in as a panelist, Rob, and she can say hi?
Oh, you can see, you know.
While they're bringing her on, I would just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Okay, Karen now can speak. If you wanted to.
So Karen, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I don't know if you just want to say hi and say a few words.
There she is.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, my my housemate here where I've been staying in Pueblo, it's past his bedtime since he gets up and is out the door by five AM, so I've hung in here with you this evening. It's been interesting to watch you all work. I appreciate your your thoughtfulness as you take care of the citizens of Woodland Park. And I'm very excited to be joining the team there with with Michael and look forward to working with you all for many years to come.
Awesome.
Welcome.
Yep, welcome.
In beneath.
Thanks for hanging with us for so long this evening.
And get used to that.
Yeah.
And Karen's first official day with us will be on Monday, so we will be seeing her in person. She does not have a cross-country trek like poor Erin. But we're very excited to have her. Last thing, I believe Suzanne has one more plug for December fifteenth.
Yes, so we have the holidays, and with the holidays, it brings election season, which begins in the city clerk's office in January. Prior to election season, we'll be having the candidate forum, which is kind of like an open house where anybody interested in running in the public, current council members that are interested in running are welcome to attend. It'll be an information session, myself, Michael, the city attorney, and I'm going to solicit our two council members that are not running to participate in that so they can answer questions to the citizens as to what it's like to be a council member. That will be December fifteenth at six thirty PM right here. Six thirty PM, yes, right here in the council chambers. And with that, I'll give you all the dates that you need to know. And the first significant date for anyone interested in running will be January fourth is the first day you can start picking up your petition. So we are already making those petitions and getting everything ready in the city clerk's office for an exciting election year. So hope you can attend and hope the public can attend that's interested. Thank you.
You gotta be careful. We'll scare off Don DeZellem if we tell him too much. And and I do, I want to add one comment because I come from a multi-religious family. We've said a lot of Merry Christmases and Happy Holidays, but there are a lot of other holidays, Hanukkah being one that I'm very aware of. So to those that celebrate Hanukkah or any other religious festival, even though we are nominally a Christian nation, we do have a lot of other denominations, and we do wish the council, all citizens, no matter what your faith is, a happy holiday season.
Absolutely. Thank you, Rusty.
Yes.
Dude, you stole my sign off. I was gonna say, happy Hanukkah. We are in Hanukkah. Merry Christmas and.
Day five, right? Day five? What is it?
Night five. Okay.
Can you say that? Yeah, the fifth night, right?
All right.
We wish you a Merry Christmas.
That's all I got.
All right, very good.
Don't go running off.
I just want to thank all of you guys because it's been a real pleasure, and I know I'll still see you next year just meeting in January, February, March. Who knows what'll happen in April, but thank you for all the inquisitive questions on the budget, all of your concerns for the citizens, and all of you really been a pleasure to work with. And council member Alfieri, you too. I can't see you, but so to all of you, thank you very much, and this meeting is adjourned.